Regarding the subject, Walpole has a medical, I think it's PA or doctor on their department that is taking care of the, they're under the same thing as you. Some of the, like Atworth and Langdon and them, some of them are, you can contact them, they're sending people over to Vermont, getting the same with doctors because it's a lot cheaper. I did talk around to see what other departments were doing and none of them have sent them to Keene or to Cheshire for $1,100 bills. Nobody does that.
Yeah, I mean, off the top of my head, going to urgent care where they say they will do, perform anything for no more than 250 bucks, including physicals, quote unquote. I think they're assuming.
We sent him to occupational health, which is where we go for our DOT physicals. And 125 bucks or whatever they are now. So we figured. And they get called in and say, what do you want? Well, you need to sign off on that list. And when they were all said and done, they figured, I guess that's what they had to do to be able to feel good about signing off on that list.
Yeah, the problem is, it doesn't tell a doctor what they need to do. It's very specific about the job activities, but not how to evaluate them. So, you know, it's, we're not gonna solve it here, but it needed to be thrown out that this is something worth looking into and the cost. I think with the new form, whether it's $1,100 or $250, if you've got firefighters that need us, it's still gonna add to the bottom line here, so.
Absolutely, definitely need to. We need firefighters, we need them approved, we need them certified.
They are, the paperwork is good for three years. It goes to, they keep it on file for three years. After three years, if you take another class, then you need another, I don't wanna say physical, but another check off. I had no absolute clue that that was gonna be that much money.
This is reminding me of a very specific medical procedure that men are supposed to get when they're 40 years old.
I think they require an extra too, don't they?
Is there an extra in the radiology or what?
Yes, but there's.
Yeah, there was.
Is it a chest extra for breathing or something, something?
Could be. But, you know, the other thing we did suggest too was, and Bobby piped in, if I missed something here on this, that there was no, there hasn't been a requirement for any kind of medical qualification for people on the fire department before this. And it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to at least have some kind of baseline minutes on people in terms of their, you know, whether or not they have any kind of, well, you've got HIPAA issues too, but whether or not they have any pre-existing conditions or, you know, what their, their blood pressure is normally. So that, you know, if somebody takes a little fire, you can say, you know, yeah, okay, you're way out of line or, no, you're not too far out of line here in terms of their health.
I don't disagree with that at all. I'm surprised that there wasn't something like that in place. This is just what frustrates me when standards and training, whoever it is, decides to jump in, get involved and do it the right way. And I, I don't know what they did in terms of, you know, coming up with best practices or, you know, did they just go to California and Keene and say, what do you guys do?
It's union.
It's a union? Yeah.
Sure, it's union.
All right.
Oh, yeah, they're all.
Yeah, so.
IAF.
Thank you.
Yep.
For.
Saying that. There's an IAF sticker on the back of my car. I can't fall in the fire union.
I said nothing.
I didn't go up to the ambulance squad too.
Right there, all those standards. Okay.
Good job of business.
So good. So we got a couple paths we're going down to see if we can keep this cost under control. That's good. And we expect that because of this change, it's gonna cost us a little bit more this year at any cost, right? Money that was not completely budgeted. We'll come up with a way of figuring out how to cover those costs, as long as it doesn't have $1,100 per person.
So that's where we're at, the fire department. There were three other things from the ESG. The recommendations in terms of the emergency management director in the department, we just wanted to remind the first selectman, who's also the emergency management director, that they're still on the punch list and will hopefully be addressed.
Yes.
Since we're coming up on a year on some of that stuff. The other thing too is that there was some concern about communication from the select board to all department heads, and not just the ESG type ones, but in general, that, you know, they are able to review their bills since they're getting charged for phones, things like that, and they get monthly budget printouts. You know, there was a comment made that their mail gets opened on occasion and so, a lot of things like that. But, you know, if they're responsible for their budget and gonna be held accountable, then they need to be put in a position to do their jobs too, so.
I think we've got that part figured out.
Good. So you're getting a regular, a regular budget printout of where you're at?
What I'm looking for is an end of the month, months to date, what was, what came out that month.
Gotcha.
Because in the past, when I've been able to get that from time to time, occasionally I'll find something that is way out of whack. It's like, where did this come from? Ask Linda or whoever, and, oh, I don't know.
That's whoever. So, okay, so that's now a process or can be a process. They'll all get it at least once a month. Go ahead, Lon.
I think we've got it narrowed down.
We do. We have a game plan.
Well, we would like, Valous Pool would like something maybe a little different. Since the money's coming out of the trust fund, we would like any bill that we're being charged before it's even paid, I'd like to have it in a folder. We'd like to see it approved. That way, we will also, cause you know, we keep our books too, so we're supposed to match at the end of the, end of the year. And instead of having to sit down with hours and hours of pulling things and finding out, oh yeah, I hate this, this month and that, so it would make it a lot easier. We need a folder, a folder out here. It'll be checked, it'll be approved right away. It should not hold up payments.
That's okay, cause then I, I can make a separate folder because the Valous Pool bills go in here, but the selectmen assign them regularly. So try to remember.
And do you file Valous Pool bills? Are they put in a separate file per season?
They're put in every year. They're put in a separate file.
First season. And it's all in a Valous Pool file? So we could pull that out?
Yep.
On anything that's paid, see, okay.
Yep.
Ah, okay. And one of these days, we're gonna have to get another file holder.
Yeah, I do need a slot for Valous Pool there, instead of it being put in my election slot and I have to go through stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, okay. I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I don't think doing a monthly budget run, because we're doing that for everybody else, we're doing it for us, should be, should not be an issue. As to the issue of whether mail gets open or not, I hope that we're not just opening mail, but I absolutely see that sometime bills come into the town of Elsted and that's all there is on it. Mail's gonna get open. Sorry, guys.
I'm just the messenger.
Yeah, I understand. And that I may have passed on that kinda back. We don't, I don't think anybody's doing it maliciously, but if things are big, it's just gonna happen.
Mail's open or mail's not open?
Open.
Mail's open.
Mail's always open. Now, I was told that even if it stayed in your department, did not say town of Elsted, it was going to your, it was always open. Never have I gotten any mail that was closed. It's been open, it's been read, it's been out.
Well, that's personal confidential, right?
No, it's.
Yeah, I.
Some of those are, because some of those are, I don't wanna blank, which I could use an example. Some of those are addressed to the departments. So, but some of the stuff Linda and I have to deal with, so we certainly will make a copy or share it with the department head. But usually, we will take care, make sure that there isn't anything that we need to address on our end, because there are some that are fairly good about opening and there are some that it can pile up, so.
They're gonna be held accountable too.
True, but it's easier if we just take care of it on our, on our end, so that there's something that we have to.
But don't get in a place where you're reinforcing bad behavior too. If they're not, if they're not thinking about that, we need to let them know.
Yep, yep.
Last thing I wanted to mention was the ambulance that you guys had said at a meeting earlier in March at some point, that you were gonna work with the ambulance and in terms of many issues that you did. And it was you who said it. And so, our feeling was that, that we didn't feel that we need right now to work with the ambulance in terms of, from our perspective, without a deep discussion with anybody, we felt there were two concerns. One were, one was, was the ambulance basically, you know, dealing with the administrative things they needed to in terms of certifications and documentation and all that stuff. And unless they needed an extra set of hands, there wasn't anything the ESG was gonna do to add to that. They would get in the way potentially. And the, the second thing was the fact that they have, we've heard at different times from Jesse, that, you know, Jesse, we need this, we need that, that they in particular need to, to develop a plan. And that may be the budget committee that may be better working with them in terms of if they've got equipment that's out of date, a plan to figure out how we're gonna go about, you know, trying to, to, well, get the new equipment that they do need to do their job.
Yeah, I know he needs stuff, but he is very quick at buying things. But I know he's, I know he's behind on a lot of his purchases, so.
It's more the bigger, bigger stuff that he needs.
Yeah, and that's, that's where we do need to get that. Here's a very small capital improvements program for ambulance. These are the things that I need to get. And now, work with us will help you figure them out. Yeah. How, how we're gonna do that. Bobby?
I think he'll see a big change next year, because this year, he's dealing with a lot of that stuff that was let, let go. So I know he's been on a thing about catching up and getting us, you know, where we're supposed to be. And he'll have a better, where he can sit down. We, we talked about this. We need to sit down and look at what things that are gonna go out of date that we need, need to replace.
I don't question the need.
I don't either.
I, I question the process, the lunging forward type.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree tomorrow, uh, excuse me, next year will be better.
Yeah.
But we wanna start working with him this year, so we get an idea of.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we'll definitely see a difference because we're working to that point.
And even if it's nothing more than just a list, or a list, or a list saying, this is what we need. And then we can work on prioritizing that and what, what needs to be acquired immediately, what can wait six months, what can wait a year. And we'll, we'll start working on that. And that's what the ESG has been very good about, working with other groups with.
I knew he was going after grants too.
Yep. And I don't know where any department really stands on going after grants.
I'm not sure, because the, the membership doesn't seem differently in terms of that you gotta appropriate the money first.
Yep. And I know that some of the grants that we do get are more or less the automatic grants, you know? Select boards in the past have always known that, you know, you, you would always get X number of dollars if you filled out the forms and set up, you know, you got overtime for catching speeders or something, ticket or whatever it happened to be.
I sent you the link for that group out of Massachusetts, didn't I, about the, the bind that you could, you know, the emergency equipment that was, yes, okay. So that's something that needs to be kept on the radar too.
Absolutely.
Cause I think the ambulance stuff would be, and maybe some PD stuff would be appropriate for that.
Yep. Yep, that was very cool.
That's all that's on my list.
Okay, thank you.
He's already over 100% on three items and 77% on another one in terms of the way through the year.
Yeah, but look at his bottom line though. It's not bad in terms of the overall budget.
That's because his labor break is done. I know that, but the problem is, it's, it's poor planning and it needs to be addressed.
And we're gonna cut the guy a lot of breaks because it's his first year doing.
If you're gonna talk to him about poor planning, you've got some other people though in terms of their budgets being way over with some things, like the tax collector with supplies. And I know the selectors have, there's not much you can do about it.
Yeah, we're not gonna be discussing the general overall budget.
I'm not talking about that. I'm just saying that if you're gonna go after some people, you got PD.
No, I'm not going after anybody. I'm just pointing out the importance of following a budget.
The PD had two very high percentages. I brought them up last week and Kelly said that they're looking on reversing that. Were they able to?
I was able to put one back into a different account, cause it was messaged over, but the other ones went a different year. So I'll have to see what the auditor wants to do with those money, I'll see a couple of years.
Clay had an issue with one of his and they were able to put it back.
Tree, kind trees.
We didn't actually put that back. He said he wanted, he wanted to add more money, put the money back into his debt tree work or whatever. We didn't automatically do that.
Tim, I heard you, having been on the budget committee for over a year, about the importance of following the budget. But the problem is that it's difficult to tell by looking at it.
I know, doubt it, but. I don't doubt that it's difficult. And I don't doubt the need. I just need, it needs to be addressed.
As I was trying to say, it's difficult to tell by looking at it. If it's high now, like the, the dispatch has been paid, so you're a hundred, a little over 100% already. You know, there're gonna be more expenses in that category and, and it's overspent. Or is it something that occurs once a year? So trying to put it in perspective is what is always challenged.
For due of report, I did a comparison from a couple of years. For everyone today, from last year to this year, that was exactly where we are. It shows you a better picture of, of how the accounts are running, higher or lower and stuff like that. I was gonna share that with, with you guys.
Yeah, and that was an invaluable tool when we do our, our monthly review. And that's, that's one of those things, if we could graciously either provide or actually provide training for Kelly to, if that's something that, you're exporting it in Excel?
Yeah, well, the older ones, I don't have an Excel until recently. We started getting an Excel towards the end of last year.
I understand.
So it is handwritten, turning it in, but it's pretty simple to do. I save them all, so I refer to them last year, this year.
I just hesitate to always ask you for this invaluable tool.
I will ask for assistance, but that's something that gives me a break from my normal regular job.
Yeah. No, we're looking for one of those, I guess. Land to clear, whatever. All right. Then at that point, we have no further discussion on that. We can go into old business. Same thing, old business.
Please, can I bring up one more thing?
Oh, you can bring up, no, we, just.
We've already gone past you.
Yeah, save it for next one. This would be, I'm thinking sort of kind of an ESG category, which we could talk about a little bit. I'll ask you a question. Where is the majority of the town's equipment?
Clarify equipment.
Vehicles, equipment, mobile equipment, construction equipment, fire trucks.
So all the departments.
Mm-hmm.
The majority of their assets, basically.
Yes, at the garage. And at the two fire stations, which, none of which have any fire alarms. Every year.
That's somewhat of an oversight, isn't it?
Every year, there's at least one highway department in the state of New Hampshire that loses a highway badge, a garage.
Now, we don't have fire alarms that are.
Nope.
Fire.
But it doesn't need have, is it need that has an alarm, who's supposed to catch it up, uh, seven bucks? It sends it to your phone?
Yeah.
So you can tell exactly what's going on.
So are you recommending as our, our fire chief, that smoke detectors are a good thing?
He protects a commercial system that will send in a lamp, not to an individual who may or may not be in the area, but to a dispatch center.
Okay.
Or an alarm center.
So this is, here's what I would say to that. I think that's a responsible idea.
Yeah, but not out of the shit.
But I don't know what the cost of that is, and I know what our budget is.
I'm not, I understand that part of it. And if I did it three years in a row for a passport, I give you three years, I done, I don't do it again. But the three years, it was between $10,000 and $12,000 at that point to do the three buildings. Now, if the system is, is piped into Keene Dispatch, then it goes there and we're notified instantly. They will do one fire station for nothing.
Well, it's ten years in a row.
Who's they?
Keene Dispatch, mutually. They have a digital alarm system, receiver.
So why haven't we gotten one done for nothing?
You're talking about they'll receive it, or they'll install the whole?
No, they will receive it and monitor it.
Right.
And at that point, you can do low heat alarms, you can do high heat alarms.
We're not talking about.
Isn't that a lot of.
You know, we're not talking smoke detectors.
That's what, okay, I understand.
We're talking a commercial system that should a truck catch fire inside the building, any one of those three buildings. It will alert dispatch.
But your budget makes you.
Yeah.
We don't, you need to do a quote though, a whatever you call it, or what you want.
All we need to do is review the quote from the fire chief, right?
Well, what I would, what I would look to the fire chief to do would be to put together a request for proposal, what the needs are. And then we can put that RFP out there, see who bids on it, so we can get a general idea of what we would need the budget for. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is is there a low-cost alternative that could provide us some, but probably not all of the capabilities we require in the short term? So Glenn brought up the neat smoke and I think that thing does, it does carbon monoxide.
It does everything at a hundred bucks a piece.
For a hundred bucks a piece?
Guess what?
It's.
Exactly right.
Hard wired or battery operated.
Think about this for a minute, because I'll make sure that your phones are getting them too. And every time we start up the truck in the station, there goes the C-Mobile. So, I mean, you have to be careful about that part of it.
But I, and I'm not saying we know what that solution looks like today, but the likelihood that we could maybe do something this year on a very small scale.
Is greater.
Is much greater than us being able to shoehorn a $12,000 purchase.
I'm not asking for that this year. I understand that part of it perfectly.
So let's, let's work at it that way. If we can maybe get that request for proposal together and we can at least get an, a fairly accurate idea of what would need to go on to a warrant next year. I think that's, that's the right way to go here.
And you can break it down, one building a year, two buildings a year, or however you wanna do it, but.
Your bet. Well, I appreciate you bringing it up.
Probably wherever the half million dollar fire trucks.
Yeah, ten thousand.
That was my thought. So then the other thing is, you gotta look at how like, what, you know, what your total assets are in the highway garage too, is that way the.
Well, yeah, just look experience with, with very tough one. They're still dealing with it with the insurance company, cause they've called, contacted me for some expert advice on it. I will touch it.
Good point. Thank you, Tim. Thank you for scaring the head out of all of us. It's what you're here for, right? All right. Any other old business?
Old business? We haven't even got no old business.
The job search, the status of the job search. It's been, did the Keene sample for the, the system for Kelly? Any, any applicants?
We have four applicants.
I've got old business. How late do you want to stay?
Tuesday.
How late do you want to stay?
Here tonight.
We should go down to one of them and see where we wanna go with them.
So this is the recommendations from the HR subcommittee. How about we wait for Rock to call this, but we put this on the agenda for next week's.
Yeah, I don't mind. I think some of them are back here and done.
They have, and I think some of them should be of the priority.
The one that I thought maybe we could talk about tonight was the, oh, the tracking system for the trucks. You can't read upside down very well. And I'm surprised yesterday, I mean, last week, we didn't talk about the, we were gonna track fuel usage and record maintenance for the highway. And we didn't talk about that when David was here.
We have talked about that in the sense that there is maintenance tracking performed by them on paper.
Yeah, but not fuel usage?
Fuel usage is tracked at a high level. Is that a safe way to say?
Yeah, yeah.
At a very, very high level. But not at like a job level or an activity level.
Or a department level?
At a department level, yes. That's as granular as we get right now. So regarding fuel, is your recommendation, it seems like more granularity would give us better ideas of cost.
I'm not recommending anything. I was just wondering where we were with it.
Yep.
Cause I didn't hear.
We didn't.
I didn't hear any discussion about it when David was here.
But, well, we'll get to that, uh, agenda next week and we'll talk about that. All right. Any other old business?
Yeah, Valous Pool inspection.
Valous Pool inspection.
Are we supposed to inspect, or have the pool inspected?
The dam.
The dam.
I think there was.
The dam.
When water goes out, is what they're gonna do. And I think Sean probably won the contacts on that, right?
Yes.
I know, I just wondered if we had the schedule from segment talk.
What is it that we usually do?
Well, the reason why we dredge the dam was so that they could get in there and inspect it.
Okay.
Which they also have to, who knows, if it's stuck in the hole right now, but once the water goes down, then I think they're supposed to come in and inspect it, the same dam.
Is that something we do, or is that something?
Something Sean.
Sean, I think that's probably Sean would probably know.
So we're out of it, basically. Can they tell the report company?
Right.
Okay, I'll have to ask Linda.
Have you ever heard back from him on the bridge or anything, or?
Um, yes, Linda has.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yes, I'm trying to remember. I think he did send an RFP. It's somewhere in her email. I'm gonna try to search for that.
Okay.
I do have that on my radar.
So they close that bridge this fall? Would we like to have?
Yeah, no. Hopefully it won't be, hopefully it will be, cause we do have some interest. People would like to put some of the proposals together.
I just have a question for Tim. When he was talking about fuel, does the highway department have a separate tank for heating the building from the other tank?
You can't ask me any questions. You have to ask him.
Oh, does anybody know what, in order to, in order to, for transfuel, the, the building would have to be separate from, and then each truck would just have to have a number and every time they put it in, you track mileage. And then I assume loaders and graders have an hourly meter on it and that should be able to judge. But I just wondered if the two fuel supplies were separate.
To the best of my knowledge, they are, yeah, they are separate.
You guys used to waste all of that and, and then the regular furnace and then the diesel fuels out that.
Right.
Yes. And that's a whole nother subject there.
So I think to that point, this goes with vehicle maintenance too. I think we could undoubtedly come up with a better way of tracking costs and maintenance in both of these areas, but I don't know.
It's not just maintenance too, it's repairs. You gotta classify the two together. You should, you know.
That's a good point.
You know, not just maintenance. Maintenance is changing oil and filters and things like that. But when you start talking repairs, that's where the costs are coming in.
And you can start looking at total cost of ownership for a given piece of equipment, whether it's worthwhile to replace it or to keep running it into the ground. So I don't disagree. I just don't think anybody's had the time or willingness to take, take on, those are complex projects. They're, they're not a super quick way to do it. It's not a fast turnaround sort of thing. But I completely support doing that. And maybe we can, let's talk about that one.
David.
What David, yeah, actually next David meeting. Barb, do you have some ideas, or were you just raising your hand as all in here to put all this together?
I've done it before. It's four, how many trucks you have.
You have the experience then.
Yeah, it's four clipboards. You start out at the beginning of the month or the beginning rating and every time, and that sits right there. It takes 10 seconds. You just put 30 gallons and beginning rating and ending rating, every day. And it's a long you keep.
It stays right in the truck.
It stays right in the truck. And even if they did work on it, you could keep, they have the sheets. You just fill out the sheets and it's truck, one, two, three, whatever. You could put the dollar amount on it according to your PO, whatever they're interested in.
So would you be willing to do this in form of an email and maybe send it?
She gave Rock some of the forms.
I gave Rock two forms. They're, they're very.
The forms.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I don't wanna come, come up against any opposition from David. And it's not David, it's just this is what you do.
Right.
You wanna know what your truck is getting for mileage. You wanna know, I mean, it's just standard procedure.
Standard management procedure.
Standard accounting in general. And it doesn't, you don't need an accountant to do it. I mean, Mike did it. We had three trucks and you just grab the board, you start on the one, beginning, ending. And at the end of three months, you, your truck used 4.5 miles. It used.
The procedures would, would involve, where do, where do those forms go after they're done? Who tallies them up then? If you've already provided.
Well, it's the department head. I mean, the department head is responsible for the department, so I, I don't disagree. But maybe. How does a department head know what's happening in his department if he doesn't have some sort of one? have some sort of?
I mean, these things will take time, but you have to start, you know, in small steps.
I don't think either of us are opposed to that.
No.
I mean, I have to see the forms, because I gave Rock two packages, and, you know, it's, it's just, we kind of made up our own, because we had to inspect our trucks every day, too, and they had to, the guys had to sign off that they checked the truck and.